We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, December 18, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation led by Dr. Lockhart of the Boynton Beach Community High School?
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, before we ask you for anything, let us first thank you for everything. May the true spirit of this season reign supreme and please bless the good people here in Boynton Beach, Florida. Let us be kind to one another and bless one another. We ask all of these blessings in your son Jesus's name. Let everyone please say amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Justin Katz is absent. Martha Brink is absent. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
There is a forum.
All right. So we have a packed house tonight, so I'll ask you please to refrain from comments because it just echoes up front here. In addition, would everyone please check to make sure your phone is silenced for the meeting? Moving on to agenda approval, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to informational items, Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
Sure. Mayor, I have nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. Commissioner Kelly?
Sorry. I attended the boat parade on December 14th with our family and the CRA put on a great event. There were lots of boats that were very theme oriented and very Boynton, especially the mahi and the sailfish, so that was my information.
So on December 5th, I attended the Madison House Tour from the CRA and it was at the Carolyn Sims Center for the Public Input Meeting regarding our new Kids' Kingdom. On December 6th, I attended Point Siena for their opening of the Reading Oasis with Boynton Beach Kiwanis, Police and Fire. On December 7th, I was at our Veterans Park for the Pearl Harbor 77th Anniversary and Battle of the Bulge. On December 8th, I was over at Sunshine Plaza for Rock the Plaza, our CRA's first, you know, weekend event. I know that the weather did not cooperate, but I believe next time they throw it, the weather will. On December 12th, I attended Coffee with a Cop over at Chick-fil-A and was at the Cobra Meeting. In addition, I went and had a City Managers and Mayors Meeting with Commissioner Dave Kerner of District 3 of the County Commission and visited the Breakers to see on the town in Palm Beach. On December 13th, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency Meeting and we were fortunate enough to have the FDOT's Secretary of District 4 there, Jerry O'Reilly, explaining all of the new road programs that are going through in the city. In addition, I attended the Palm Tran Service Board and I was the special guest sleigh bell ringer for the Gold Coast Band. And I'd like to ask that city staff or the city, make sure that everyone is well aware of the event because it was not on all of our calendars, I don't believe. On December 14th, I was over at Leisureville to deal with their Veterans Committee and also was at the Boat Parade. The CRA did a phenomenal job. I'm looking forward to see who actually won because all of the boats were great. On December 15th, I was at Pawty at the Beach, P-A-W-T-Y, for dogs. I think the Parks and Recs Department did a wonderful job. Everybody was happy and one of the side benefits that we didn't realize is that the people who brought their dogs were actually communicating with other people at the beach. And so that is one of the things that we forget to do sometimes is to talk to our neighbors and really get to know who we are at Boynton Beach. This past Monday, I had a meeting with Community Greening and hopefully they will be working with the city to get both native and fruit trees in Boynton Beach. I also attended the Inca Meeting and this afternoon was at the Police Benevolent Association's Is there any more informational items? No? All right. Moving on to announcements of community and special events and presentations, we will have Andrew Mack announce the solid waste pickup schedule for the holiday season.
Good evening, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works and Engineering. Just wanted to announce what our holiday pickup schedule is for the solid waste division being that the transfer stations in the city will be closed on December 25th for Christmas and January 1st for New Year's. If your normal pickup is on Monday, December 25th, you will remain, December 24th, you'll remain the same. If your pickup day falls on Tuesday, December 25th, your makeup day will be Wednesday following the holiday. And if your normal pickup day falls on Tuesday, January 1st, your normal pickup, your pickup makeup day will be Wednesday as well. For our commercial customers, if your pickup day is on the 25th, we will actually be picking up a day earlier on Monday and during, on the 24th, we won't have commercial roll-off service. If you have any questions regarding your pickup schedule, you can call the Public Works Department at (561) 742-6200 or visit the city's website.
All right. So one of the things that I realized after our discussion about the tire pickup, you know, is there anything else that we could do regarding recycling with the solid waste authority? I know a lot of people are getting new electronics, you know, this holiday season. Is there something that we can do so that we're not just throwing that into the incinerator and maybe being able to recycle those?
At this time, we don't have any programs, but that's something that our recycling customer service person will be working with the solid waste authority on looking at recycling the batteries, especially out of like phones and the lithium ion batteries and any of those. Those are actually quite valuable and send them out. So that's something that we're looking into. It may not happen for this year, but we'll definitely work on it for next.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, that's cause, you know, I mean, we do it one week a year or two, twice a week for the tires and, you know, I was just thinking that maybe we can do something regarding the paint and other things that, you know, we don't want people throwing it in the trash can and there is some value to having it being recycled. So I'd like to see if we can do something for that, you know, pilot program starting in 2019.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have announcement that city offices will be closed on Monday, December 24th and Tuesday, December 25th, 2018, in observance of the Christmas holiday. City offices will also be closed on Tuesday, January 1st, 2019, in observance of New Year's Day. The City Commission has canceled the commission meeting that would normally be held on Tuesday, January 1st, 2019. The only commission meeting in January will be Tuesday, January 15th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to bring up Mary DeGraffenwright to our Events and Programs Manager regarding the 48th Annual Holiday Parade Award Winners.
If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge Mary. I was stunned when I sat down and realized what it takes to put on the holiday and how many people actually participate in our city. There are six departments and volunteers and through that total, there were 90 people on the event site assisting before and after the event. So that's quite a team to put together one of our largest events and I do want to acknowledge Mary who led that team this year. It was one of our more successful events that we had in the last holiday parade in the last 48 years, so I do want to give a kudos to Mary before she makes an announcement and to everyone that volunteered and assisted. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary DeGraffenwright, Events and Program Manager. On Saturday, December 1st, the City of Boynton Beach hosted the 48th Annual Holiday Parade with 59 entries in the following categories: marching bands, floats and vehicles, marching units, and creative. In addition, from start to finish, every unit was beautiful and entertaining. We would like to now recognize and congratulate the following winners. Out of eight bands and three drum lines that participated, the winner of best marching performance by a marching band is Boynton Beach Community High School Tiger Sound Band. We'll ask your representatives to come up, please. In this category, we had 17 participating units. The winner of most outstanding float is Knights of Columbus at St. Mark's Catholic Church. Our third category was most creative and original and the winner is Delray Medical Center. Overall, there were 14 participating units in this category. The winner of the best marching unit is Galaxy E3 Elementary Cheer Team.
Cuteness is too real, I can't take it.
galaxy stars.
How about another round of applause for all of our winners? And to our winners, the City of Boynton Beach had an amazing parade due to all of your hard work and efforts. Thank you for participating and we look forward to seeing you again next year. Thank you.
That was fun. Celebration.
Thank you. I'm gonna introduce Michelle Olman. She's our Events Administrative Associate and she will be introducing to you all, or be giving you information tonight about our MLK event. Just a minute.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, my name is Michelle Olman. On Saturday, January 12th, the City of Boynton Beach will host a Martin Luther King Celebration Day event at the Carolyn Sims Community Center. This year's theme is Bridging the Gap. The event will begin at 12:00 PM and end at 5:00 PM. The MLK event will feature the Boynton High School Tiger Sound Band, the Galaxy Cheer Squad, Steppers and Drum Line. We will also have gospel choir, praise dancers, food trucks, a variety of children's activities, and a powerful inspirational speech presented by Minister Ricky Gardner of St. John Ministry Baptist Church. The evening will end with a jazz concert featuring the Valerie Tyson Band. Bring your blankets, towels, and chairs for a fun-filled, exciting day. Memories are made, legacies are lived, when we continue the dream of unity among all humanity. So together, let us celebrate to keep the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King alive. Thank you. One last thing, sorry, but there are event flyers on the back table here. Thank you.
Okay, and there will be food as well?
Yes, there will be food trucks.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further announcements? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin. All right, going once.
Good evening. Chris Montague, 222 West Ocean Avenue. I have a question for the city manager regarding Nicholas Prince and the paid leave of 14 months after your internal investigation revealed that he drove a police squad car while intoxicated, was filmed on video threatening to kill a civilian, and was, you were advised to fire him by both Chief Katz and Harris.
You know, this is not a the question and answer time. This is, we, she has your question and she will get back to you in the future unless you want to respond.
The police chief's in the back, he can take him outside and provide him the actual facts.
Well, not take him outside, but...
No, no, said it, said it. No, that's not what I meant. Take him outside to lock the room.
So it seems that our new police chief, Michael Gregory, will be able to respond to your question. Is that sufficient?
Okay. If you could also respond to my email because the decision was ultimately yours.
It was, but it's a personnel matter and I really cannot discuss that with you in detail. The chief will shed some light and give you the factual information of the issue you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
If there's nobody else.
Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Just an update.
Peter Blass, is that your?
Oi!
Your clock's running.
Maybe, maybe not, okay. So let me hurry up. I am just here from the West Palm Beach Courthouse where we are continuing to contest the governor's election. Of course, the press is suppressing all that, but there has been quite a lot of activity with the Santis and the Commission, so you will never see it in the newspapers, but you can visit my Facebook and we're having fun. The whole idea is to improve the election system in Florida. Of course, in Boynton, we have terrific elections, nonpartisan and all that. We have a great mayor and so let me focus on Boynton. My activities here are to continue the work of University of Boynton. We have almost 100 students working on very exciting topics. We still don't have a building, but that will come. I would remind everybody, I think this is just by way of educating everybody, is that there are very serious plans to obtain energy from the Gulf Stream. We are the closest point, we and Lake Worth, and we can get a lot of wealth out of that. In addition, I am talking to some world famous architects about the incredible building, a two kilometer building or two in our city to greatly improve our economic situation. And my goal is to have minimum wage here, it's gone up, $80 an hour. Otherwise, just, I admire how our city is safe and doing very well. We have a great management, great mayor. My goal is just to step in and make it even better and of course, I will hire all of my opponents to help me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lloyd, last name is Forrest. I live at 3137 Orange Street, that's in Boynton, and my main concern is the drugs in my neighborhood. Me and my family, we fear our life at times, the shootings, and there's another problem we dealing with, the drag racing, and I've been trying to find out how can we get speed bumps put up on Orange Street? And last of all, there's a vacant house where there's drugs, prostitution, stuff is going on on Orange Street. If I could get some kind of response from them, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for letting us know that information and the chief will be speaking with you. All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on public audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving to close public audience and moving on to administrative to appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We will have one applicant for the Arts Commission. So I'd like to nominate Saddam Silviero as the alternate for the Arts Commission.
Second.
Yep. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have three positions available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, two student positions available on the Education and Youth Advisory Board, one position available on the Historic Resources Preservation Board, one position available on the Library Board, and two available on the Senior Advisory Board. Moving on to consent agenda, would someone like to pull any of the items from consent Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bids and purchases over $100,000. Approved task order with CDM Smith in the amount of $180,931 in accordance with the RFQ for General Consulting Services Contract Scope Category C awarded by Commission on August 7, 2018 for migration of lift stations, wells, and potable water storage facilities to a new supervisor, control, and data acquisition platform.
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Approved task order with CH2M Hill Jacobs in the sum of $105,358 in accordance with the RFQ General Consulting Services Contract Scope Category A executed on August 22, 2018 for nanofiltration membrane element replacement at the West Water Treatment Plant. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion...
I wanted to give Commissioner Kelly a turn.
I know. Thank you.
Gotta share the wealth.
Motion is approved unanimously. Onto item 7C, approve an annual purchase order to Peterson Industries of Lake Wales, Florida in the amount of $100,000 as a sole source vendor. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So what are we getting out of this purchase order? Because it doesn't say.
It provides parts, service, and support for our Peterson equipment, which is typically heavy equipment, solid waste, rear steer, and, you know, trucks, loaders, that type of... Oh, sorry, Ender.
Yeah, yeah. She got it right. Yes, absolutely. I apologize for that. Next time, we'll make sure that we get the description in there for the equipment that it services. They are a sole source provider for our bulk trash trucks and the rear steers, so we have some equipment there that was sent to be fixed and we have another, two other trucks that are gonna go up to be refurbished.
And how is the tent over at the Public Works that we approved a couple months ago?
The new canopy?
Yeah.
Yes, it looks great and the mechanics are very happy.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. May I have a motion to approve? Oh, you already did that, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Approve issuing an annual blanket purchase order to Precision Air Systems, Inc. of Wellington, Florida in the amount of $150,000 for air conditioning repair services as needed at various city buildings utilizing the Palm Beach County School District contract. The Palm Beach County School Board's bid process satisfies the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion with discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Can you just clarify the buildings? Because I know we have a lot that are now no longer here, I just wanna know what we're, were these being approved for?
All the ones except for City Hall, Art Center, Madison, and the old police station and the fire station. So all of our recreation buildings and mostly recreation buildings, fire stations, and the temp facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
And Andrew, were we able to salvage any of the newer HVAC units that we bought in the last two years?
Yes, any of those were salvaged and actually reused a couple and some of them are at our yard.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Authorize the purchase of replacement vehicles as approved in the fiscal year 2018-19 budget in the estimated amount of $186,590 by utilizing the following contracts, the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, and Sourcewell for three replacement vehicles. The Florida Sheriff's Association and Sourcewell procurement process satisfies the city's competitive bid requirements. May I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. And any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, review the Public Arts Master Plan Concept for the Town Square Redevelopment Project. Debbie Coles to be Public Arts Manager to provide PowerPoint presentation.
Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, thank you very much for listening to the Town Square Public Art Master Plan for the city of Boynton Beach. So, I'm going to start back in August 24, 1917, I should say 2017, sorry, when we had the open space workshop and the public art that was discussed. And basically, the Arts Commission was involved with the facilitator that day, and they spoke about what the public wanted to experience while they came to the town square. So they used like your senses and movement to kind of determine what type of experience that they wanted to have. And then they also talked about the top three Arts Commission Master Plan kinetic forms of art, kinetic, glass, and eco. And they came out with some of these words that they wanted to experience: community, sensory, sculptural, multi-generational, inclusive, some nature and history. So there's quite a lot that was wrapped into all of it. And then we continue with meetings, with our partnering meetings. So this is the whole Town Square development staff, as well as the city staff, together, jointly meeting frequently, and coming up with what are the things that we want to do to make the town square really stand out. So we have, iconic kinetic artwork was one of the things that we determined that would be a really good wow factor for the town square, and also serve as a gateway feature. It would also be a lot of determination to have things like interactive and calming places, place-making, and connections, and then, of course, to celebrate our unique location. The Arts Commission has been very, very busy working many months on this project, so much so that they, the past five months, they've increased their regular two-hour meeting to like a three-hour meeting. So they're very committed to this. They've been reviewing, selecting, and approval, approving all the six projects that you'll see here. And these projects are a combination of requests for qualifications and invitation process, and they're focused on qualified artists and fabricators for the project. And of course, the other part of it is really trying to initiate the local emerging artist program and connecting to organizations, and then also connecting to the public. In addition to that, they've been working on the kinetic art planning and also the regular development projects that come in for review. So here is a brief master plan that I'm going to frequently put up at each project that you're going to see. So at first, you'll see here in the, in the kind of faded-out areas is the private developer areas, and the rest of it is the city area, but I'm just going to kind of go over these pretty quickly. If you look to the left, that's where Boynton Beach Boulevard is. To the south is Seacrest, to the north is First Street, and to the right-hand side is southeast Second Avenue. That gives you kind of an orientation to where you are. So the private development along Boynton Beach Boulevard will be the mixed use, and then on the corner of Boynton and Seacrest is going to be the hotel project. And on the south side is going to be some residential as well that's wrapped around the garage. So on the right-hand side, you'll see a yellow square that indicates the garage for that project over there, for the residential project. So in the middle is where the Town Square public spaces are. So you have on the south side, you'll have the City Hall Library building, and then opposite that, on the north side, the green space, is the big open space. And then in the north of that is the Children's Schoolhouse Museum. South of that, you see the old high school, and then the K-Pog Park. What you'll see is the stars that indicate on here are the Avenue of the Arts. So we had Avenue of the Arts, and what the purpose of Avenue of the Arts, which is a year-long rotating outdoor exhibition, is to bring visitors and connect cultural tourism to Boynton Beach. So we have all these sites that are going to be placed back into the town square. It's almost like a wayfinding source. So you literally go from site to site to site on the map and bringing you all the way to the marina. This year for the kinetic, we're starting at first, and we are connecting to the marina for the first time. So this will then be a very cohesive wayfinding with kinetic and other arts that are sited year-long for connecting the town square to the downtown of Boynton Beach. And then you'll see three purple dots, one, two, and three. Those indicates where some of the artwork that was in Town Square will be sited once again. They'll be recited into the landscape or are placed in certain areas that really, you know, match their environment that they will be incorporated into. And then, so you'll see another dot that says potential public art sites, and those are the ones we've been working on. So they're not really potential, they're conceptual that you'll see tonight, and it's 1A, 1B, and 1C, and there's a number two and three. So those are the areas that you'll be looking at today. But again, as you can see, they kind of connect one another and bring you into the town square. So it acts as a flow into the areas to experience the different new facilities that will be there. And then the last thing you'll see in this map is the blue lines, which are on the garages, and what I call the canvases that are on the parking garages, you'll be able to see throughout the town square. So we'll go over that as well. So each time, you'll see a little bit of a new plan. That'll indicate where we are. So the art budget, it is a part of the public ordinance, which is 71%. So if you look at the $1,150,000 total, it's really a combination of the city's commitment as well as the private commitment, and as a partnership together, we form that partnership to try to create this art experience throughout the whole master plan. The 30 of the 1% then will fund the public art department, as well as, if you think about all these projects that you'll see, we need to maintain them. So there'll be maintenance costs that will be part of that 30%. So back to the master plan, you will see a circle in yellow, and that will be indicated of the location of the project that we'll look at. So we're going to be looking at the kinetic first, and the purpose of the kinetic, again, like we said before, was when you turn off of Boynton Beach Boulevard down Seacrest, you know, there's the indication, you'll see it from that distance. It'll be, wow, what's that? What's happening? And it's the entrance into Ocean Avenue and the Town Square Center itself. So this is the concept, and the concept is called Reflections. Again, it's an iconic kinetic artwork, and what is this going to do for the city? It's going to, or for the town square, I should say. It's going to brand it, it's going to bring cultural tourism, and it's going to contribute to the economic development of the area, and it's going to create one-of-a-kind experience because how many cities have kinetic art? Or Boynton is probably one of them. And the other thing, it's unification for all to gather in this spot. So it's a gathering spot that everybody can come to this one location and then meet and greet, and then they go off to their different experiences throughout the town square. This is the artist's concept, and what is this meaning of this art is really important because it reflects the city's diversity and unity that is representative of the town square. So it's the collective of the whole entire city, and that's what this gathering spot is about, and also how these intersecting wings of the artwork actually connect together and represent. They also, should I finish the description or... Okay, thanks. So the other thing, it's derived from nature. What does that mean? When you see these wings, they're representative of our environment, and again, if you think about them, if you look them on the side, it almost looks like a seagull, like a sketch of a seagull in the air. So it kind of has that study of nature and environment incorporated into it. And again, it's iconic, and it is about the kinetic. So yes, Commissioner Romulus, do you have a question?
So it moves on its own? Wind moves it?
Correct. It will move on its own by the wind, and as these three towers, the piece itself is 27 feet high by 26 feet wide, so each one of these poles is stationary, and the wings will move and kind of intersect with one another. There's seven total wings on each piece, there's 27 total, 21, I could do my math, 21 total elements that'll be circulating amongst one another. They will be made out of stainless steel, which is the best metal to have here in Boynton, close point to the ocean. You need something that's going to last. So it'll be polished stainless on the surfaces, and the top and the bottom, it'll be like a brushed stainless. And you'll see a little bit more information about it. This kind of shows the perspective of it, again, if you're coming down Seacrest, heading to the City Hall Library building and Ocean Avenue, so this will kind of be the perspective that you will see. So you can see it's very iconic, it's not overpowering, yet it's really gives you that striking difference of what is going on here, what is happening here. This is brand-new, this is exciting. Question?
Yeah. If you go back to the last picture?
Sure.
That concept or that rendering there, is that what it's going to be, or is it going to be the one that's before?
Correct. It is all the same piece.
No, like that bottom portion where you see people actually sitting there, is that still a possibility, like it looks like a staircase or something?
Oh, you mean the base? Do you mean the base where they're gathering, where these figures are sitting?
Yes.
No. We will be looking at a flat surface with some areas for seating, but it'll be more like a courtyard for gathering. It won't have these steps that will be coming up and going down into the sculpture.
That's something that, that could be discussed with the artists to still make it a possibility.
It could be. The artists designed it that way, but again, we have to really look at the spatial area, how it's going to fit in that space on that corner. So that's one of the things that we're really examining. There's, you know, some discussion of maybe a tier or two, but we don't have that final decision yet.
Well, I like the tiers.
You like the tiers.
I think it would actually make it more interactive.
Right.
One, and two, I would perhaps suggest giving it a feature that could make it manpower too, where somebody can actually just go up and move the bottom and like make it move instead of just letting the wind move it. I think that would also be something that actually adds to the human effect of...
Interaction.
Interaction, and letting them interact with the art, not just watching it twist.
That's an interesting perspective.
So that's something that I would like to suggest.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to echo the tier system. You know, a lot of people will use this as a gathering space for future events. The main issue is that you can't have that on the sidewalk, the tiers, so it has to be somewhat set back. As for the, I don't know how tall they are...
27 feet tall.
And so what would the bottom rung be at?
Oh, how wide are those poles are?
No, no, how, so it's 27 feet tall. What's the bottom?
From the ground to where the first element's moving? I think it's like 15, 10 to 15 feet.
Okay, so nobody's...
It's pretty high off the ground.
So nobody's going to be able to jump and touch that?
Correct. Yeah, you have to have it off of the ground, it has to be a minimum of eight feet, but if there's trees and stuff, it's higher. So it is above that.
And we don't want people throwing things at this to make it move either?
Pardon me?
We don't want people throwing things at this to make it move either.
No, exactly.
So...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions about this piece? There's some more information that you can see on it. So the artist has done some family of these type of products. This is a reflection of one of the pieces that he's done in the past, and this is, these are six elements. And, but the reason I'm showing you this, it shows you the quality of the work that he does, but this piece actually will be similar to what we'll be doing. We'll be uplighting this, so during the day, the stains will reflect not just the people around, the clouds, the sunset, the different elements of the daylight to nighttime, and then at night, it will light up, and it will change colors. So we'll have LED lights in the ground facing up and shining on the piece, so it will change different colors like that you see here, almost similar to what you see happen at the water tower. So we'll kind of have a connection between this and the water tower, which is down the street, which would be kind of cool. And here's, if you're inside of this piece, this kind of gives you an idea of what you'll be seeing looking up. You can see the wings, they're 11-foot span, each one of these wings, so there's a lot of space that changes based on what's going on above you. It's constantly changing. And kinetics move in very, very light winds, and then a lot of people ask me, well, if it's 40 mile on Wednesday, they go crazy and they're going to fly off or hit one another. That's, they're engineered precisely not to do that. They move at a gentle and at a very manageable level, and then they don't go wild and crazy and spin off of the poles. So it's a, it's a very complex system that these are made with.
So meaning that in the event of hurricanes, these are secured and we don't have to do anything to them?
Correct. That is correct, yes. And they will be manufactured to all the code that we, fabricated to all the codes that we have here for the city, absolutely. So this was an invite to Raffaunzo, and he is, and why Raffaunzo? He's like one of the most recognized international kinetic artists, but he also happens to be located here in Palm Beach County, part-time. He has an address here in West Palm Beach that he often is here six months, and then he's over in Geneva. But he's also been a very bit advocate of our International Kinetic Art exhibit and symposium, and actually, very much a part of making that happen, so very supportive of it since 2012, which has set us apart, Boynton actually, in the world of doing something as far as kinetics, it's a very different type of art form. And he's also a dedicated world leader, and he's committed to creating a very cost-effective, iconic piece for the city. These are some of the other family of works that he has, and I can send you, or you can go to the link and see some of the video of his artwork that's been on CNN and other news organizations that really have picked it up. But you see in the corner, there's something very different where there's a big red heart, that's an intersection-type piece. So it's kind of a family and a style that he's created, and we have a specific one for our city. And again, talking about the dedication of finding the right price for this piece because he searched from China all the way to the United States, and as we wanted to press upon the idea of doing local fabrication, try to keep it, you know, at least local, the prices were just crazy high, but we did find, and actually, he found somebody who's very comparable to a manufacturer in China, right here in South Florida, in Pompano. In fact, one of the employees there is a resident of Boynton Beach. The met, the fabricator called EES Designs, they do just nothing but fine art projects, like for Alice Akok, if you're familiar with who she is. So all over the world, they go everything from fabrication, conceptual ideas, all the way up to installation. So they're right down the street if we ever need any, have any problems with it, they'll be right available for us to contact and help out. And then the other connection that they're working with is Boca bearings, and Boca bearings, even though they have Boca Namum, they're headquartered right here in Boynton Beach, and they're an international bearing company. So they're going to be supplying the bearings, and I think there's like 21 bearings in this piece, so it's quite a lot of bearing. So the bottom line is, we're getting the Chinese prices here in the United States with the quality metal, but also, you know, having the confidence that we have somebody local to be able to, you know, service and/or help with the maintenance of that piece. So now we're on to the next one, which is, if you look in the yellow circle, that's the courtyard, that's right in front of the City Hall Library, right along Ocean Avenue. And that's, was an interactive public art call that we did for that specific location. And the purpose of this project was to, you know, create a public space where all ages, abilities, and demographics can really meet and engage with one another. So this piece was again on RFQ, and the Arts Commission and some of the selection panel was all involved with the, selecting two of the different teams that were working on this project, and then they, they gave proposals, and then this, this artist and this team was actually selected, Donald Giarella and Asim Ardaman. And it's called Synesthesia, and you'll see why. These are like columns, and there's many columns that are created in a circle, and they basically have, again, very reflective surface to them, so they are reflective of when you come up to them, or you're passing by, or I guess the environment around them, you'll see all of that in it. And they also have lighted surfaces in the very top that will illuminate during the day and night, and I'll show you the night view in a moment, the concept. But the other thing it will do is emulate sounds, different sounds. So again, what will those sounds be during the day? They'll be very different than the sounds at night because you don't want crazy loud sounds at night, you want something a little bit calmer, but during the day, you want something that will reflect with what's going on in your environment. So since we are closely located, there might be sounds like waves washing over the beach, or it could be seagulls or birds. I mean, again, what we're going to do to, to have a public interaction with this is have one of these columns present at the International Kinetic Art Exhibit Symposium on display as a test, and we'll have a public interaction so they can help us to choose what sounds they would like to hear in this environment. So you can see it at night, get the idea of how it will light up with different lights again. again, that, very connective to what the kinetic does light-wise. You have a question again?
Are they wide enough to allow for individuals that are wheelchair-bound to drive through?
Absolutely, yes. Everything is geared towards all-inclusive, and that specifically was for this one, so that people can see themselves at different elevations, or even at, you know, whether they're in a wheelchair or whatever abilities that they have, they'd be connected to that. So going on to the next one, this is the area that we are connecting the old high school with the Capehog tree, which is both historic in our city. And as we know, the old high school not just being a cultural center, but it also is a facility where we can rent out to corporate entertainment or for, like weddings and things like that, a space that can be rented out throughout the county or throughout South Florida. So what we wanted to do, again, we heard that we wanted vibrant spaces, and then we also wanted some quiet spaces. And so this area was, the idea was to create sensory native gardens for gatherings, learning, and reflecting, because this is the quiet. So again, if you go across the street, you get a book from the library, you want to have your lunch in this garden area, that's a nice place to stay quiet, reflective. At the same time, it's a learning garden, because what we've done is we met with all of these community entities and started to talk about, how do we create this so that it's, again, the native plants, the sensory plants, the butterfly gardens? And if you get a kind of a clue of what this could look like, it's being designed now. It's, we don't have exact designs for it yet, but we're working on it right now. But again, the idea is, if you were to have any of these corporate events or a wedding, then you can go out into these gardens and take photos, have a photo shoot with your, you know, wedding party, or you can have an intimate cocktail party out on the side courtyard right by the old high school there. Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm envisioning the Addison. Is it going to be kind of like that? Do you know that courtyard in the Addison? Is it, remind, do you know what I'm talking about?
Addison Myson?
No, the Addison.
The Hotel Boca.
I'm sorry. I don't.
Right off of, okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it's going to have walkways and benches.
It's like a huge tree, and it kind of arches over, and you can walk through.
That's the Capehog tree. We're going to accentuate that Capehog experience and connect it to the old high school, with the history of those combined together. And we will also, one of the artworks that are going to be incorporated into this is the Seahorse Fountain that was over by the library. So it's a very pleasant-sounding water. It's not a huge fountain or waterfall. It's just very drippy, and it will work very nicely in this environment. So it's kind of a garden environment, if that's what you're asking, yes. So these two locations, again, what I call these are the canvas areas for the garages on the south and the north side of the town square. And what we envisioned there is to engage the local emerging artists' project and come up with some connection to our coastal location. And one of the things I wanted to do, and I already had a conversation with the Healthy Aquatic Institute, again, when artists research their project, they want to, we want them to look at, what is that connection to our coasts? You know, what makes Boynton special? What makes us different? So I think through that institute, they'll learn a lot about what is exactly right off our coast, and be able to come back with some visuals that the Arts Commission then can narrow down to a couple artists, that we will have visuals that we can place on the canvases on these garages. And whether or not, as you can see, some of these are like cut-out fishes. They could, you could add metal to it. It could be perforated metal onto the garages, or it could be colors of stamped cement. There's many different methods of applying the art to that. The fire station, as you can see, is up to the left, a little bit out of town square, but it's part of it. And again, what we wanted to do there for fire and rescue is to locate, again, emerging artists, to locate artworks that will be on the lobby entryway windows. So they will do, again, another exercise, where they would connect with the fire station staff and the community, and what is that, what is the fires, fire and rescues job, and how are they connecting to the community? So they will take that information and interpret it to visuals, and those visuals we put on to like a window film, and those window films will be applied to the lobby. So it'll have a very close connection. The police headquarters isn't, oh, yes, go ahead.
The back one?
Sure.
So that concept where you have that big one there on the side, is that something that we're going to distribute throughout the rest of our stations?
I'm not following which one again?
Is that just a concept or an idea, or is that something that's actually happening? The big one there on the side?
Debbie, that's right. There is something similar at Fire Station 5, not exactly the same. At Fire Station 5, the rest of the stations don't really have a place for something like that, so the answer would be no, because there's no place to put it. But, I mean, what we're trying to do is identify these police stations with their numbers somewhere on them. Some of the stations just aren't designed and aren't in a place where you could do it, but this station, it was a perfect location, because that's right on the corner of the road, so it made sense to put the big one on there as part of the feature of the building. I hope that answers your question.
That answers my question. I think what I'm leaning towards is just talking about branding. You know, I guess that would be a conversation with Eleanor, but if we start to brand our fire stations, our police stations, I'd like to continue that uniformity and make them all kind of have that eye-popping feature that everybody understands that this is a public safety location, and you can receive assistance or whatever there.
That's a great idea, and we are working on some of these, just some of our buildings aren't quite in a location where it makes, it works. But, yeah, absolutely, I think that's something we want to do, is make sure our sites are branded with not only just the buildings themselves, but signage being, so you know where you're going and why you're there.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thanks. I didn't hear what your question was, sorry. Thanks, Colin, for answering it. So the police headquarters, as you know, is going to be located opposite the fire headquarters, EOC, which is up off of Hyridge and Gateway area. And this was, again, specifically to speak to the, to preserve the sanctity, excuse me, and the trust, and then also, how does the police build a strong relationship with the community as well? So this artist team came up the idea of building up community, and their idea was utilizing the courtyard so that when people and visitors come to the police station, they'll have this artwork that will kind of have them feel very comfortable when they come into the police station. If you look to the right, that's where the band of windows are, and that's where the community center rooms are into the right. There's that dotted line that you see, that's the front entrance. So you're taking yourself from the parking lot, and you're walking through that community, and this piece is directing you into that location. And you'll see, as we show you a couple more slides, of what it actually does and how it works. So again, it's going to be integrated into the plaza. There are these, these safety, which they're actually planters that are used as safety bollards, if you want to call it that, so that people can't crash through that area and crash into the window or into the police station. So they're, you know, beautification pieces, yet they're for safety. So you can have some etching onto these boxes that kind of give you those words, that then make you feel comfortable and confident that this police station is built for the community. It is safe. And then if you look on these panels, you can see how it's very interactive with whoever is walking through this space. They're clear, they're going to have words that are going to be etched into the panels. There's places for people to sit. There's like a little bit of a area that is a, again, a quiet space, almost like part of the box, which will have a tree or planting or landscaping in it, and then will kind of graduate, come out to the courtyard itself. It will be lit at night. And then it also, again, these words will be created with public sessions that the artists will be a part of when the police have their connection with the community. So these words will be created. You see some samples of what would be done on the different panels now, but they will be custom to our city.
Debbie?
Sure.
Again, these are accessible for anyone who is wheelchair-bound or any other disabilities or accommodations, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, everything's, everything in public art is ADA accessible.
Very good, thank you.
Absolutely. So, that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Comments?
I think it will open up to the public also as well, if you have any questions or comments regarding the artwork that has been presented. All right, seeing none. Do you need a motion to approve this, or is it just informational?
It's a concept plan. You can make a motion.
We're the owner, so I'd love for you to vote on it, because we're, it's your art project.
All right, so, I guess, would someone like to make a motion regarding the plan? And I guess for Vice Mayor, your comments, having a tiered system on the Ocean Avenue Seacrest, to see if it's possible? I know Colin's shaking his head.
It's crimping his budget greatly. That's one of the reasons that it's a topic of discussion, but we're all there. We want it.
How do you put a price on something priceless?
I like that attitude.
We're working on it.
So that, our desks and chairs. We'll get your boardroom.
We just bought those.
I think we'll include some sort of area where people can sit and gather for some, and design it into the, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We'll figure out something that's really nice, so it's a gathering spot.
And again, I don't want to forget the point that I made about trying to find a way to not only let people see it move, but perhaps be involved in making it move. I think that also adds another element of individualized connection with art.
Yeah, I can certainly ask the artist if that's possible, to try to keep it within budget, to do that might be the challenge, too. But we can certainly ask that question.
I mean, that might be an engineering thing, where like they put it in some type of platform that allows for it to move, or whatever, on friction or some type of...
Yeah, I mean, that would be the question we'd ask, is there a mechanical device that can be installed in the base area? Somebody could hit, and you wouldn't, I don't think you, I'm thinking from an engineer now, not an artist.
I don't necessarily mean push, I mean like...
Yeah, you wouldn't want people hitting it, because these are all very specific, yeah.
Stay in your wheelhouse, Colin.
Yeah.
Not hit it, like rotate it, like where somebody could just literally kind of like...
What you're saying is move it like this.
Yeah, like, that would be cool, I think, like where you, whatever.
I mean, I would certainly pose the question to...
My mind goes places.
Pose the question to the artist, yeah, you never know.
Yeah, I think it's cool. Anyway, so yes, motion approved. I'm so moved.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David. Have a good holiday.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last item for new business, proposed resolution number 18-183, authorize the mayor to sign an asset purchase agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Tropical Breeze Estates for the acquisition of the Tropical Breeze Water and Wastewater System and prove the associated costs to purchase the systems, install the necessary water meters in connection to the water distribution system.
Can you move discussion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Staff could just explain, go into a little more detail with this.
I'll let you.
Michael O., Deputy Director Utilities, yes.
If you could just go into a little bit more detail about what this is and what it's doing.
Okay, certainly. Tropical Breeze Estates is a mobile home park, and it's, we've been talking to them for about two years now. Actually, we've got members of the board here with us this evening. They run their own small water plant, and they, at the moment, actually deliver bulk wastewater to us. The proposal here is that we would take over their wastewater gravity systems, we'd take over their water mains, and install our own metering system on it. We've been investigating the condition of all of their equipment and looking at it at some length over the last couple of years. So we're very comfortable that the cost is easily defrayed. They still have to pay connection charges and pay deposits just like anybody else. So it enables us as a utility to widen our customer base and help defray costs. And whenever we do these exercises, we always ensure that the existing customers don't, aren't financially penalized by the operation.
Okay, and being that the Board of Tropical Breeze is here, they're also in agreement with all of our terms and conditions. Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And then, moving on to the future agenda items, basically, Laura, I know that David has prepared a Opportunity Zone PowerPoint presentation for the BDB. Is that something that we can have? I know that we talked about that, if that can be put on the next agenda, if the commission's agrees? All right, wonderful. All right. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope everyone has a great time spending time in Florida and not in the cold weather. So, take care. Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'll ditto that sentiment. I hope everyone had a great Hanukkah, a happy Hanukkah. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I will see you all in 2019, God willing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned. Thank you.